I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I have one.
Okay.
I would like to, under the item number four consent agenda, I want to separate the applicable demand and subvention aid from 2021.
Okay. Is that a form of a motion?
I want to make a motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion of the second. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sherwater.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stipes.
Aye.
That is six eight, so we will have it, we will move it to the last thing on the list. In the public hearing tonight, we have an amendment of proffers for conditional zone property for the reserve at Round Meadows by Shaw Development LLC, applicant and property owner. The change of proffers would allow an increase of five additional lots for a total of no more than 56 single-family detached dwellings. The development is adjacent to Round Meadow Drive on tax map numbers 494A, 62, and 63, tax map 495A, 64, and tax map 494A, 55E1, and 55E3. Is there anyone here to address this?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Appreciate your time this evening. My name is John Neal. I'm an engineer with Gay Neal Incorporated, 1260 Radford Street, Christiansburg.
And Andrew, do you have the map of it? Thank you.
We've got a pretty straightforward request this evening, but I did want to show you kind of the graphic to show you the five additional lots that we're talking about. If you recall, I think you approved the plat here a couple of meetings ago, something like that. But in the interim, originally as part of the overall development design of the lots, and if I can, I'll go up here.
There was a member of a Shaw Development team that was going to build a house here and construct on this lot here, and when they were planning that, we had left off these lots in here to kind of provide them a little bit more privacy as part of the overall plan. They said plans have changed or moved into a different location.
So in thinking about the housing crisis and the demand for housing right now, as well as the existing utilities that are there to serve these lots and the road, we saw an opportunity to add five additional single-family detached dwellings here. And so that's the plan. One of the other things to mention is these five lots will be an additional $30,000 of connection fees for the town that we use towards infrastructure repair and improvements for your water and sewer as well. And so that was existing lot there, space that we took from that one lot and added five additional single-family lots that will match all the rest of the lots along Round Meadow Drive there. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
And that's right as you're going in, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So the reason why you're coming back is to request another five lots to be added to the plat? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. The way the, because of the conditional use permit, originally it only allowed for 51 lots, and so we have to actually make that adjustment to allow the five additional lots. So really, the only thing that is changing in the entire thing is the plan showing those five lots and then changing 51 to 56.
And from my understanding, these are not patio homes or anything like that, correct?
No, ma'am, just single-family detached homes.
And then when you talk about $50,000 fees for connection fees, does that include the five?
Uh, no, no. So $30,000, I'm sorry if I'm, I didn't mean to miss.
You said thirty.
You said thirty?
Thirty thousand, that's okay. Yeah, so for the five lots, the total of the connection fees for those five.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Daniel.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to address this portion of the public hearing? Hearing number one, seeing number one, I will close that public hearing and revise conditional use permit for planned housing development for the reserve at Round Meadows subdivision by Shaw LLC, applicant and owner, to allow an increase of five additional lots for a total of no more than 56 single-family detached dwellings. The development is adjacent to Round Meadow Drive, and the tax maps are the same as I read out in the earlier public hearing. Does anyone want to address it? Basically, it's just what you told us, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can you show, Andrew, can you show the map to me and make it a little bit bigger so I can see it, because I couldn't even see on the computer as far as the, the house is going?
Turn it around.
And those are sidewalks, line, going up, moving, yes?
Yes.
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Is there anyone to address this? I don't see anyone, so I will close the public hearings. We'll move on to the agenda consisting of the monthly bill payment and a contract with Elvis Lang Electric Company for Lights over the leisure, therapy, and competitive pools Aquatic Center for amount of $481,059.26.
I so move that we approve consent agenda item B and C as presented.
Okay. Second. Motion in the second. Discussion?
I would like to mention something. I was very pleased to see that we have a local company that won this bid and being Elvis Lang. So just good news there that we support local.
Very good. And I think they're going to do it in August.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sherwater.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stipes.
Aye.
Ready, yes, six eight. Approved minutes of June 8th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second. Motion of the second. Discussions?
I want to make a comment, but they're incomplete.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
I think it should be stated how they're incomplete for the record.
There's a lot of stuff that are missing, like for example, the letter, when I read the information that Mary Pettit had given us, I read those, that letter during the last council meeting, it was not there, complete. There was the email that I, we had gotten from Nick Rush saying where he didn't recall and stuff, and the whole thing was not there. There was a conversation that took place about when I mentioned that I didn't get the help for the Koya forms from either Randy or Michael Barber. That's not there. There's several, several things that are not there, and I don't feel like I should board on it, because I feel like this is a.
Okay, well, they are, they are all on record, the video of this meeting. Anyone have to look. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sherwater.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stipes.
Aye.
That's file one. Thank you. We have no introductions and presentations tonight, Randy, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. This is citizens' comments section, where we open it for comments from the general public who would like to come and talk about issues with the town. If you're here to address us, if you would come to the podium, your name, your residential address, and you have three minutes. Is there anyone here to address, council? Hearing number one, I will close the public citizens' comments. Are there any committee reports?
No, we have central business tomorrow at noon.
Okay.
But that's no new information.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I guess the, the facade grant committee.
Okay.
Yeah, I had, spit that one out. We have been meeting a couple of times now, and we have right now five applications that we'll be dealing with, and hopefully in our next meeting, we'll bring those, you know, so we don't know who they are.
Okay. Facelifts. Facelifts.
Yes.
Yeah, facade grant, yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
All right. That sounds good. Anything else? We will now move into discussion by, and actions by the mayor and council. Have a conditional use permit request from John D. Elmore for a contractor's storage yard in the general business B3 zoning district at 710 Pepper's Ferry Road Northwest, tax parcel 435A-23. The property is designated as residential in the future land use map for the 2013 comprehensive plan.
I'll make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit and accept the planning commission's recommendation that was unanimous to issue the conditional use permit.
I'll second.
And a motion in the second. Any comments? Any questions?
Yeah, I want to mention that I have a property very close to this location. I don't feel and believe that there is any conflict of interest there, but I just want to make sure that that's cleared out there, and if anybody thinks that there should, it will be conflict.
It's on 114, Pepper's Ferry Road. Pepper's Ferry Road.
You're on the wrong one.
I'm sorry, I'm looking up this.
So we have no comment on this one?
No, I'm sorry.
You're coming back at me in a minute, right? Okay. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sherwater.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
This is not going to change my vote, but I do have a comment about it. I just wanted to say that this was not following the comprehensive plan, but I still want to.
Okay. Thank you. Conditional use permit request by Aztec Rental, applicant, on behalf of the New River Community College for Contractor Storage Yard in the general business B3 zoning district at 412 Renox Street, tax parcels 527A-200 and 527A-202. Property is designated business commercial on the future land use map of the 2013 comprehensive plan. And I believe we have had a couple of emails from people, one or two in support and one or two against. We received those last two days.
Right. I so move to approve conditional use permit by Aztec Rental.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
May I?
Yes.
I have a clarification with the, with the updated general layout of the similar property, the application of the last, that showed the storage area for the large equipment closest to Roundox Street with set, with setback as well as screening in that area for the large, large equipment on trailers to, to follow that issue, that issue.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you, just, I think you discussed that the last time, last year.
And this, this was a sketch that was in the agenda packet.
Okay. Very good.
Certainly, this includes the planning commission conditions also.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Madam Clerk. Oh, I'm sorry, Joanne. Do you have, come on. I know you're stammering about.
Yeah, I have a property close by, I don't think that there is a conflict of interest there, but if anybody feels that I should not board on this item, that I should abstain from it, please. And no, I don't have a problem with either one.
Okay. I think you're good to go.
We have a spokesman here for Aztec, I'm not sure if he wants to or that we want.
We've already had a public hearing about Aztec today.
Yeah, that's true.
We're trying to give him an approval.
I know, I know that there is a lot of conditions that we put in place for this, and I am very happy to see them, because that will, that was a little bit of a compromise between, you know, the neighbors and a little bit of, you know, the company. I'm very happy that you guys are coming to Christiansburg. I also, I am concerned, you know, as well, because, you know, there's children around and there is a lot of conditions here that I think will work for the neighbors as well, for the company. But one of the things that I wanted to ask the town council members and see if you guys will even think about this, I know that there was a weight limit of 1,300 pounds, and I know I had gotten some conversations with some of the neighbors around there, that they were hoping that that number could be lower. Does anyone in here think or want to change the weight limit?
No.
It was 13,000.
13,000 pounds.
13,000, yes, 13,000 pounds. I got all my numbers. 13,000 pounds today, yes, 13,000 pounds of.
I would like to keep it as is. I'm fine with 13,000 as the recommendation through planning.
You and this microphone are more so here.
I'm okay with leaving it as is.
And, uh.
Sorry, go ahead.
And I wanted to make sure that, can you put the mouth up again? I want to make it clear to the citizens and residents around this area. I know some of the comments that I have heard was that the land behind this property, right there, it's, um, there were plans of possibility of, you know, selling the piece of land later on, building a house or whatever. I want to make sure that right now, that's not happening. That's not the request that's being asked to counsel. It's being the rezoning for the whole piece of land, so obviously, there is some restrictions there that will make sure that some of the equipment doesn't get storage close to the homes, but I want to make sure that people know that as of right now, that's not what came to counsel.
Is the, I think the footprint of the lot that we're looking at, that's the extent of what they're going to be using?
I know, but I want to make it clear to the citizens that.
Any residential use would take a conditional use permit in the B3 district.
I understand, but at the moment, that's not what's being asked from us, so it's the whole piece of land, and I just wanted to make that clarification.
That's correct. That's my understanding, that's, your understanding and you own the place, so that's pretty good, huh? Okay. All right. Any other questions, Congress?
Yeah, I'd like to make a brief comment. We did hear from a handful of citizens between the public hearing and now, and I reached out to Devin Johnson, an adjacent property owner, 105 Lester Street, and we talked about, her concern was emissions, y'all are familiar with, I think everyone got the email, and I suggested she contact Aztec directly to find out, she, her concern was diesel emissions from heavy equipment, and we reviewed the layout together, and I recommended she talk to Aztec and find out exactly what type of diesel equipment might be there and where, how it would be stored and held, and she did not speak with Mr. Brown, Bill Brown, who was here at the hearing, and I'm not sure, but she did contact Aztec, and just for the public record, Aztec said that the, any, any heavy diesel equipment will be stored on trailers and will not be operating, you know, per se on the property. It would be stored, stored in the heavy equipment storage area, and her concerns were alleviated by, by that statement, so just to get that out there for the public and, and hopefully all is well with that, but that was one of the comments, and that was the follow-up on it.
And then also, the maintenance of this equipment is also not going to be done inside, and it's also not going to be done in the construction site.
I think another good thing is too, they're not going to be using this equipment every day, you know? Maybe, maybe a week, maybe every two weeks, you know, but there'll be many of them, so it's not like it's going to be on one thing right on top of the other.
But the conditional use permit process is another, an easier way to say it, is a special permission, and so, you know, directly affected property owners factor, in my mind's eye, they factor in a lot more than normal, because it's not a, you know, it's not a by right use, so I think it's important to listen more, even more carefully with the CEP process.
And as number nine does say, we have the review, planning commission will be reviewed in 12 months.
And, yeah, we talked about that as well.
Okay. Anything else?
When are you guys planning to start doing some of the fencing and the work?
Uh, we're, we're getting bid from several different people, fence companies right now, so we're mostly just waiting on closing, so as soon as we can close on the property, we'll get that done. I mean, we anticipate within the, within the first year, the only setback would be the availability of the fence company. I'm sure as many of you are aware, this year, everything's been very backed up, so we're trying to move on as quickly as possible, but I think we've done our portion, so it's just kind of had the mercy of the availability of those companies to carry out that.
So from my understanding, that should, and keep them away from opening up their store, right, Randy?
Provided with fencing, we could require a bond for it potentially. We have, for I guess, things that aren't necessarily safety concerns, we can allow a bond for posting, for improvements to allow people to open.
When do you expect to open, when do you expect to open your new store?
I would say probably will be moving in the middle of late July.
Okay. Thank you.
And the fence is at six or eight foot?
It's six-foot privacy fence with a gate that also matches in its privacy, so just to enclose the view from, like it would be drawn out on the.
And I'll just point out, it's the equipment portion of the, I guess, the business that requires the CEP, so just like electronics, rental, things like that, they wouldn't need a conditional use permit for, so they could operate as a rental store without a conditional use permit.
Okay. All right. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sherwater.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stipes.
Aye.
Six eight, thank you. We have a resolution to approve the real estate tax rate for 21, 2021 at 16% of, of 16 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value, and that has not changed for the last several years.
Make a motion to approve the current real estate tax rate moving forward for 2021.
I'll second.
Motion in the second. Discussions? Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax.
Aye.
Councilman Sherwater.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
That is six eight. Resolution to approve the personal property tax rate for 2021 at 45 cents per hundred in assessed value, and I believe that has been the rate since 1988.
I so move to approve the personal property tax rate for 2021 at 45 cents per hundred in assessed value. I second.
Motion in the second. Discussions? Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax.
Aye.
Councilman Sherwater.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
That is six eight. Thank you. Resolution to adopt the budget for fiscal year 20, July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022.
I so move to approve the adopted budget as presented.
Second.
A motion in the second. Discussion?
I have a question as far as the page number two under the budget. I guess this is for Valerie and Randy. When I read this, I know we voted on this water increase the other day, I, I didn't vote on it, it could be erased, but when I'm reading this, to me, it's not really clear. It's saying right here that the proposed increase for 2022 will be deferred for another year. 2022 schedule rate change was from $8 monthly to 1,000 gallons to, to $9 per month, or 1,000 gallons. So I guess my thing is, shouldn't it be in there, a little bit of clarification as far as the rates for 2021 are actually, because that's happening in 2021, 2022 budget, but it's really happening this year in July?
We're supposed to raise them by $2, so there is, we're still deferred one year on our proposed increases, but I'll work on making that a little clearer and find.
Yeah, because it looks right here like we're not increasing it this year. That, to me, is how I'm understanding the wording.
Okay.
So if that can be changed, I would like that.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax.
Aye.
Councilman Sherwater.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
That is six eight. Resolution to appropriate the funds approved for the fiscal year July 21, July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022 budget.
I so move to appropriate the funds as presented.
Second. Okay. Questions?
Yeah, under the page, sorry, one sec. All right. I'm sorry, give me one sec.
This, you know, this resolution is just to appropriate the funds, we've already voted on the budget.
I know, but it's still part of the budget discussion, and I was going to talk, but we moved on it very quickly. Is that okay?
Go ahead.
Um, just making it clear that the American Rescue Plan money, the $3 million and so, is under the grants, under the spenders for the year, and then also, the park is under the capital projects for the amount of, you know, almost 17 million. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. The recovery money is in the budget, but it is not.
It's allocated.
It's not allocated, because we don't know exactly for sure 100% how we can spend it, is that correct?
I know, but it's under the grants right now, so I just want to make the clarification that it's there under the grants.
Okay. All right. Very good. Anything else? Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilman Sherwater.
Aye.
Sorry. Hubbard. Councilwoman Sax.
Aye.
Councilman Sherwater.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Staff reports, town manager.
I have a few requests. I've had a request to recognize Carmen Graves for repeating in the epic trials on our county signage throughout town. Does the town council have any issue with that?
I think it's great.
Yeah.
I approve things, obviously, like for employees, retirements, and also volunteers for, like, rescues, just, you know, something like that, I'll probably bring it to council. I might call you individually sometimes if I do get a request like that, because I, like I said, I guess myself, I want to be fairly consistent with it, but some things like state or national recognitions, I think will, I'll try to bring to you if I receive them.
Is that in track?
Steeplechase.
Steeplechase.
That is 15th in the.
Her mom works here at the town of Christiansburg.
Yeah, the chairman works for us.
Yes, so that's special.
Wouldn't you all know already that have received a request in regard to allowing food trucks on town, parking, basically on street parking? That is something we historically have disallowed, the town manager, I believe does have discretion The town manager, I believe does have discretion to allow things like that in those parking spaces, and we have allowed that for temporary things, such as construction trailers, cleaning buildings, painting buildings. And with grand opening of the Iron Tree Brewery, we allowed it for their grand opening for a couple of days. The request is to be able to do it on a more regular basis, and I don't, I think that's probably a little beyond my authority, so I've kind of palled it you. I think the general feeling is, from what I've gotten from talking to you, is that you would like to allow it, but under, I guess, some type of regulation, certain circumstances, and probably some permitting process.
Was the request from Iron Tree?
Yes, it was.
I think I'm the one that sort of opened my mouth first on this, is what I was asking is maybe they could have a food truck there two nights a week, and we could do it for a three-month period, see how it would work out. And concerning food trucks, I've heard that they've had several food trucks interest, and they could rotate the food trucks. So that would be my proposal, that they have food trucks be able to go there two nights a week for a three-month period and rotating.
Randy, are you just asking to look into this and then bring something back to council?
That's correct, although if you would want me to allow it kind of on a limited basis, I'd be willing to do that, if you want to allow it. I think I could probably regulate it to some degree just by requiring the drawing and kind of plan of how to deal with pedestrians. I think I've kind of told you what I think some of the concerns are. You know, blocking sidewalks is a little bit of concern, pedestrian safety, just crowd around the sidewalk area and potential for somebody stepping into the street, and potentially a child standing with somebody, things like that. So I'd like to be able to control that obviously to some degree. And there is kind of a question of fairness and equity of use of public property versus, you know, brick-and-mortar businesses here in town and people who are trying to rent business space also in town. So those are kind of a couple of things to consider. Although, like I say, I think kind of the general consensus of what I've heard from council is that you'd like to allow it on a limited basis.
It also opens it up for any other place on Main Street that somebody wants to access.
And I think that's kind of the thing. When I mean a limited basis, I think, I mean the town picks out a couple of spots around town that we think are some of the safer spaces for it, and we only allow it in those spaces maybe one or two days a week. And maybe you have some type of lottery system or something for the food truck that goes there, because I think it's only fair to, you know, rotate the space a little bit.
I-
And I think another requirement is obviously, I think you need a town business license and collect meals tax, which-
Which they do.
Yes, yes, correct. If you set up around parking lots around town, you need to collect meals tax and have a town business license.
Well, it's not on our agenda for discussion. Randy has, for lack of a better word, has pulled this, I guess. He has that information, and you can follow either two paths. Either, either you can take it on yourself to use your discretion as you see fit, or maybe in the next meeting, you present maybe an outline of your thoughts, and then, then we could put it on the agenda for discussion. But tonight's not, you know, not open discussion, I don't think. But-
Do you want to-
It's Randy's pleasure if he wants-
Suggest Randy to-
Well-
Make a decision on temporary basis, or you want to bring it back to us and let us make the final decision?
I think a lot of the town council members had their time to speak about this, and I think it will be fair for some of the older ones that we haven't spoken about this, for us to say a word, even though I still want this to come back to town council, just like Mr. Stipes said, because I, I personally feel that I was the one that was probably telling you about, because he called this week, and Randy called in, and my concern is fairness. You know, is this fair to those business owners? And I also requested about information about what are the permits and licensing that you need when you do have food inside of a beer or alcohol place, because the reality is, a lot of restaurants in town that have the ability to sell alcohol and food in those places, from my understanding, they require different licensing. And I want to make sure that we're fair to those businesses as well, as well as, another concern that I have is that I sent you an email about the intersection right there where there is, there has been created new parking spaces on both sides-
Joanna, can we finish this discussion before you jump into another one? Are we going to allow Randy to bring something back, put it on the agenda so the citizens can see that, show up for the public hearing, and you make your recommendations?
And it wouldn't necessarily require a public hearing for allowing on Main Street-
Right, but the public can come and, during citizen comments, at least it'll be on the agenda so people know we're discussing it that night, unlike we're not-
I personally feel-
I don't think we should discuss it tonight. I'd like to see Randy bring it back to us.
I will definitely agree with that.
And I would say as simple and straightforward as possible, not, you know, an outline of what you think is best.
Okay. I had a request from one of the political parties to close Hickok Street for July 10th for two to three hours for a political event, for basically a meet and greet. That is outside our 45-day window for application for community support for street closures and things like that. And also, I'll just obviously point out that it's a political party that's making the request. I assume you don't want to allow that based on, I guess, prior conversations, that we don't want political things at our events or our, I guess, property. I know we have allowed them obviously to set up at Wilderness Trail Festival, but that's, Wilderness Trail Festival's run by Kiwanis, so I'm assuming that's a negative on use of Hickok Street for a political party event?
As far as I'm concerned, and we've talked about this before, but the political, I don't know which party is asking for it, and it doesn't really matter to me, but my broader concern on opening the door for political organizations is, it goes far beyond, you know, Rs or Ds or Is or whatever it is. It could go to, it would open Pandora's Box for some groups that we, you know, I won't mention any names, but it could open the Pandora's Box for political organizations. So I would say, I would stick to what we talked about with the farmer's market and say, no, we needed to keep that door closed, keep Pandora's Box closed. I'll go along with that.
Mr. Bishop?
I agree, because I think that's what we say. So once again, let's stick to our guns this time.
Well, we got some emails last year that were, you know, kind of concerning, and I can feel what they were talking about, you know, because we want to be fair, and I think it's just, there is those little rules that we made over here that I think we should stick to.
If you're all right.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have.
That's all we have. Mr. Broden?
Nothing to report, sir.
Thank you. Any other town staff to report? Mr. Kelly?
Yes, sir.
Things going all right with you and the engineering staff?
Yes, we're doing well.
Ms. Twitty, everything all right down in the finance section?
We're hanging in there.
Very good. You got the police department covered?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Counsel reports, Mr. Stipes?
Have no report, mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Showalter? Mr. Hubbard?
You know, I just had to say, I don't even get this gentleman's name here, but this gentleman's here tonight, sort of to pray for us, and I thought that was very good, and I thought it was very worthwhile. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bishop?
I don't have anything to add.
Mr. Stipes?
Yes, I just want to mention this. Last weekend was very busy with Father's Day and also for Juneteenth celebration at Christiansburg Institute, so I hope everyone had a chance to, to go out and enjoy that celebration.
It was very nice. It was a very good event. Ms. Hicks?
I want to thank Mike Malabon, I think that's how you say his last name?
Corner, yeah.
Yes, and then the sea vets. I think they did a great job trying to provide us with the water fountain for the trail and, and one for the doggies, so that's really exciting.
They've been very supportive throughout the time on this thing, on a lot of other stuff.
Well, I think that was amazing that they did that, and I, and I just encourage, you know, more organizations to continue to do that because they beautify our town and they make our town better, so thank you.
Very good. I don't really have anything. Is there any other business to come before council?
Joanna, you mentioned Run Oak Street, paving strikes, the, right down here.
Oh, yes. So, thank you. I have gotten several phone calls, and I guess some emails that I sent Randy about the intersection over here between Run Oak and Main Street.
Second Street.
First Street.
First Street, sorry.
Run Oak and First. Down here are the calls, the new traffic pattern.
Yes, the new traffic pattern is a little bit confusing, and there is not enough signs, and I kind of agree that there is not enough signs. There was a wreck the other day. As a matter of fact, one of our school board members' daughters got in a wreck there, and that's concerning, you know, and so she wants to, she wanted to send an email, but figured, you know, she talked to me today, so I wanted to see if there is anything that we can look into making that better.
Randy, can we get into flash and lights down, signs down there?
Something like that, we do have the authority to do. We've kind of shied away from that. It might be appropriate for the street committee to, to deal with, although I'll say, maybe town staff take a look at it first.
Yeah, I know it was advertised for several weeks down, back on down the street, and then we have the one orange sign there.
We did have, I guess, the digital messaging sign out for two or three weeks beforehand, and we do have, I guess, during and after the project, we've got a warning sign with a couple of flags on it. I did ask Public Works to put up an additional sign further down the street, too, just kind of one of those temporary type signs, just letting, letting people know new pattern ahead.
Yeah, with the street committee be appropriate, and sort of the bible for traffic control is a manual and uniform traffic control devices and flat, well, I think that's appropriate. Let us talk some more about that.
One thing we have done, too, is we definitely pushed it out on social media a little bit, too. We had it on our homepage, but I don't think we had pushed it out a lot on social media, so we did push it out a little bit more on that. And I think it, it might just kind of be more awareness than, than anything, because just kind of changing the traffic pattern and your expectations. I think if it were that way kind of all the time, which I think it actually was that way 30-some years ago, by the way. I think it was told it striped that way, and I think it probably was. So, like I said, just kind of, I think it's the new now, as much as the safety, I think.
Anytime there's a change in traffic patterns, that's, that's a risk, but-
But, you know, we will keep track of accidents and things like that. I think, you know, right now, I think we've had one accident there.
But you put out additional signage, and I still would want the street committee to take a look at it, see if there's any- We could do some other things, some pavement markings, maybe some bolder things, but I think that's a good recommendation. Let us take that up with your, with the staff, have them look at it, maybe make some, present us with some ideas, and then, and then the street committee can report back to council.
But in the interim, we'll go ahead and put the temporary signs up, I mean, another sign up.
If you kind of really want to make it noticeable, you could come up and like hard scape that first island. That way, you know, you're channeling people that way, and it's a little more obvious.
Yep. Yeah, I don't know about-
Well, maybe since-
Additional signage, I think, is the first step. So we definitely have an additional sign. Right, so there's two coming in?
Yes.
There is another street that came out to my attention. Route 8, I know, I don't know how much of that road is owned by Vira. Right there where the bridges are, the one new bridge is being built right now, the patterns are really confusing. You got a left lane that turns into a right, but then you cannot make a left. I mean, it's just really confusing. And I don't know if that will be the towns, if that will be the Vira or the counties.
That's Vira.
Vira. Would you be able to look into that? If you're coming from Reiner to Christiansburg, it's the most confusing thing ever.
Yeah, I've done that. I think people just don't even follow the rule. They just go and, and do the only that they want, but that's good, that may be straightening it out. It'd be very simple, probably, but-
And then, too, as far as, I love the signs that we put in the town of Christiansburg, and I sent a picture, and some pictures to Randy the other day. Wherever there is a sign, a welcome to Christiansburg, I kind of would like to put a little bit of attention to the side, to the roads, just because there is like, it's like a welcome to Christiansburg sign over here, especially like that one in Reiner Road coming in, Route 8. There's like all kinds of loopholes in there, right on the left. And I think that should be paved, maybe, I don't know the expense of that, but maybe we can talk to Public Works and see if you can come up with something to get it fixed.
Either that, or maybe just take the asphalt out of that area because it's not really part of the driving all.
Well, do something, because it looks really pitiful when we come into the town, and that's the first image that we, we come to, so.
Okay. Sets the tone of what to expect.
Yeah.
No, I'm just kidding. Okay. I have nothing to add.
I've got one thing. Randy, when I, when I was driving down here, I noticed that is there's a, a part of a block wall on Cambria Street that's crumbled.
It has, and it's, we determined it's partially on town property and partially on private property. We've got a meeting with the property owner this week, this Thursday, and basically try to determine how to go with that. I think we'll be able to work out something agreeable to us. Honesty, my plan is to probably work out something to slope that back, that bank back a little bit, and take that retaining wall down and height a little bit, just because that'll bring the cost down, and just kind of long-term safety and maintenance is a lot, lot lower, and it's a lot less expensive to build a lower wall than it is to build a six, five or six-foot wall.
Right. So I know a few years ago, we discussed creating either a reserve for those walls like that.
Correct.
Is that just something we're just going to take on a case-by-case basis at this point?
It is, and we have 180,000 in the reserve fund this budget, and we were actually adding 180,000 to it, so we should have 360,000 available.
Okay, good.
Go work with the property owner.
Work with the property.
Correct. I will be asking you for an allocation for that at some point, though, because it's in reserve fund at this point. As a matter of fact, if you want to give me the okay to kind of unallocate that when the time, I guess I need to give you a dollar amount, though.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else? Thank you for tonight. We're adjourned.
Okay.
We've been in the office for an hour and a half.
Yes, I've been leaning a little bit behind this time.